Day, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at three P M. Joan?
Councilor Paul?
Present.
Councilor Edwards?
Present.
Councilor Janik?
Present.
Councilor Edwards?
Present.
Councilor DiMediris?
Present.
Councilor Burke?
Present.
Councilor Milborn is absent.
I'd like to entertain a motion and a vote to convene an emergency meeting within forty-eight hours notice pursuant to Rhode Island general law, forty-two, forty-six, six C, related to staffing issues and public safety concerns of the Tiverton Fire Department and town's response or plan of action.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Roll call?
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Statement of the council president as to the need for less than forty-eight hours public notice. Based on the media reports and temporary closing of one of the town's three stations yesterday, the town council believed it was important to call this special emergency meeting within forty-eight hours notice to update the public as to the current situation and issue related to staffing of the Tiverton Fire Department, as well as to inform public about the steps that have been taken by the town administrator and fire chief to promote and protect the public's safety and well-being. Chief first?
Let the chief give an overview statement.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
The Tiverton Fire Department is currently facing a staffing crisis. Just to give you an overview of what's going on. So we're budgeted for thirty-two positions within the department to ride on the apparatus, the rescues and the engines. And that's four shifts of eight. We currently have nine vacancies, plus two members are on family medical leave. So that has left us with twenty-one available to do what thirty-two normally do. Many firefighters and firefighters are working eighty to one hundred hours per week. These firefighters that stayed last night to keep, there were four firefighters that stayed last night to keep station, to reopen Station One. Situation we're in right now, this is unhealthy and unsustainable long-term. We could do this short-term, but we're not going to be able to do what we would normally have thirty-two with twenty-one. So just to give you an overview of what happened resulting in the closure of the station on East Road, Station One, on Friday. So on Thursday, the deputy chief, the captain and myself looked at the staffing that was coming in on Friday, and we had two people on shift. That ship is already in a deficit of two. It normally has five, but we had one person out on family medical leave, one person out on personal time, and one person on vacation. Those are contractual or federal law mandated. So with that situation, we were, we had two people coming in. We were looking at shutting down the casino detail when that person was going to get off at seven in the morning. He was going to come to shift, which was going to give us three. And then later in the afternoon, we, so we were gonna, we were at three, so we were trying to figure out how to get up to at least six or seven so we could keep all the stations open. We had two firefighters that called out sick. Again, they have sick time in their contract. And that left us now with, you know, with one person coming in. So at that point, we were in dire straits, trying to figure out what to do. The deputy was working to try to get people back, and we ended up only coming up with three more people. So we ended up with four people on duty. So we staffed one rescue and one engine. And that resulted in the shutdown of Station One during the daytime. I just want to say, it was reopened at night due to the fact that the firefighters that had been working long hours, those that worked on, that were in on the day, agreed to stay at night and cover. And deputy fire chief and the fire marshal also covered at a station that night. So that reopened Station.
And also you were in town.
I was in town for a little bit, yes. But they were the ones that did.
Okay.
So there were a number of things that we have been trying to explore. Within the confines of collective bargaining agreement, we're allowed to have per diems coming from out of town. We did try to do that. I do know that the deputy worked very hard to try to bridge a conversation with a local community that's nearby that, to try to, and I'll let him speak to that in a minute. But I did tell the chief that we also had to stop doing the casino, that it was important that whatever staff that we did have, that they would be protecting the residents of the town of Tiverton. Not that they're not doing that at the casino, but more importantly, to, you know, our ambulances, our fire trucks. And I agree totally with the chief, and we are very short-staffed. And this is not a reflection on the staff themselves. They, we have some excellent members who work very, very hard, who have been trying very hard to keep this town covered. But we are, you know, we're losing people faster than we can, can follow.
So we did try to get per diems?
We did.
Josh?
So on Thursday, like the chief said, our current auto-back policy states that we hold the shift prior working. So the members that are working the day before are responsible for the next day. We looked at that. Every single person that was working on Thursday had a hundred, eighty to one hundred and twenty hours worked already that week. So it was very hard to try to consciously, consciously keep them, knowing that safety for them, their families, themselves, the residents, all that stuff. So in the, in the attempt to try to get everything covered, I contacted Little Compton. In two thousand nineteen, there was an M O U with Little Compton that was signed. In April of two thousand nineteen, they were allowed to work at the casino for our details, and they were also allowed to work on our trucks.
As per diems?
As per diems. They filled out the proper payroll paperwork. There was agreements in there that if they got hurt, that it would be covered under Tiverton and into local trust and all that stuff.
I was present.
So, and I know, your saying it was on.
Yeah, I was there.
I reached out to Chief Patron and asked him, I told him that we needed help. And he told me he'd reach out to his guys. He also has, you know, eleven, I think he has eleven full-time firefighters, plus four or five part-timers that work for him. The part-timers are all firefighters currently somewhere else or retired firefighters. So I told him it didn't matter where they were coming from, that we would take whoever could help. Call me back, maybe twenty minutes later. He had five guys that were willing to work for us. In the meantime, we had gotten, we had found, with the help of Mary Lou and the chief secretary, we were able to find the M O U, the signed M O U from two thousand nineteen. We, in the meantime, it got, it got let out that we were calling part-timers, that we were calling Little Compton for help. It's my understanding through a conversation with Chief Patron that their union came to Chief Patron and said that they weren't going to come over here, they weren't, that nobody wanted to come work, that no one was going to work after a certain point. So at that point, Chief Patron said he wasn't going to fight with his union and force his members to come work for us when, I mean, he doesn't, it's not his, he's not going to start a staffing or a fight with his guys. And unfortunately, that's what led to the
The lack of staff.
inability to get outside firefighters to help us. The decision was made, like the chief said, we stayed at four during the day. Obviously, my role as the deputy, I was in service and I was going to respond to any calls I had to respond to with them. At night, we tried to get people in. Captain Manchester was ordered in. He held himself because he said, direct quote, that he wasn't going home because he didn't feel confident in leaving his family, his wife, his kids, or his family without fire coverage. So he couldn't, in good conscience, go home. So at that point, I
There are a lot of good members like that.
I know.
I contacted the fire marshal, Captain Murphy. I asked him to work. He wanted to work, but there was a slight issue, so I ordered him to work. So the contract may have been broken as he is not allowed to take overtime, but
But this is an emergency situation, so.
I found it to be important to staff the fire department.
I would doubt they would grieve this.
If I can chime in on that, it's not that he's not allowed to work overtime, but he's paid a different way, so he's not entitled to overtime. But the department certainly has the ability to have him work a truck in emergency or non-emergency situations and to pay him according.
So he worked, and he's, that's all going to be taken care of. And he worked last night, so that left us with the five.
And you.
And then I said I wasn't going home, so I stayed. So Captain Murphy and myself worked at Station One, on Rescue One, last night.
How'd that go?
It was excellent. Seven o'clock at night, we had our first call.
Did you?
You're not that far removed.
I had my scanner on. Where was that first call? South Lake Road, which is two, three minutes from Station One. So we, me and him stayed until seven o'clock this morning, where the shift that was coming on duty today relieved us, and we have, all three stations are open right now, functioning, with six guys on duty right now.
I just have, I'm a little confused on why Little Compton men wouldn't come over, because that would have taken care of our firefighters who needed to go home and rest. So, and you don't have to answer this, because you probably don't know either. But it makes no sense why they would feel that they were doing something wrong coming over here and helping us.
If I can chime in briefly on that, we do have a provision in the collective bargaining agreement collectively agreed to between the union, the Tiverton Union and the town that allows without, without qualification of the use of per diems and part-timers as long as they are qualified and available to work. And the M O U that the deputy refers to is an M O U that was negotiated with Little Compton at or around the same time that that provision was mutually agreed to in the collective bargaining agreement. So there would be no, there's nothing illegal about it happening, and it's actually, it was part of a measure that was put in through collective bargaining.
Because of this.
For this exact situation.
Now, I would just think that our union would be appreciative of another town coming over and helping.
I, I believe they are, but the, the M O U that was signed in two thousand eighteen had an expiration date to it of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
The collective bargaining agreement is still in effect. So it's still, it's still, the process is expressly allowed through collective bargaining.
I'm sorry, any M O U to get people in staff?
Here is what, here's the problem that we're up against, was it was eleven o'clock in the morning on Thursday, on Thursday, trying to get people in the door, like to be here that night, the next day. I mean, it was very rushed and unable, unfortunately, we weren't able to get anyone, too.
So I can't speak to Little Compton's union and executive team as to why they made, whatever decision is that they made, it is what it is. But I did ask Chief Bailey to reach out to every surrounding community chief and let them know the dire straits that we were in, and that we would probably be banking on mutual aid to deal with some of the issues that we'd have to be dealing with. And he did do that.
And I know he did, yeah.
He did reach out to each and every one of them.
And just, just to go on that point, last night, there was four calls within one hour. We went on our first call at seven o'clock. Rescue Two went out on another call. Portsmouth came over for a call on Boogamash Road. And then there was a call at Fodlin Beach. So Engine Three was at the Boogamash Road call. And the call at Fodlin Beach came in, and Little Compton knew that we were unavailable and had no apparatus to send because everybody was on other calls. They sent an ambulance and an engine over. So they sent, they're not refusing to send mutually.
Mutually. But this would have, but we were fully staffed, so this happens on a normal day sometimes.
We were at six last night.
Yeah, but we had three stations running.
Yes.
Which we normally do. So that's not an unusual occurrence to get mutual aid.
Right. And I don't want to make it sound like Little Compton's refusing to help us at all.
Right, right. I understand that. I understand that.
They came mutual aid, they did. It's not that. It's
Fall River and Little Compton both responded to my email that I sent and assured us that we've been a really good mutual aid partner to them, and that they would continue to be a good mutual aid partner to us.
Well, all the numbers have always shown that we do more mutual aid from Fall River than they do for us. So, so they, they are very appreciative. I've worked in an emergency room with all of them, and they're very appreciative of the help.
One of their ambulances in the city does as many, more calls than we do in an entire
Oh, I know. You're telling me. I know. Yeah, I know. I know. So going forward, we should probably still work on the per diem issue and see if we can get.
We will. We'll definitely continue to try to work on that. We will have a meeting with the casino people, let them know where we're at. We will try to handle calls from within while they're on staff, but we will probably abandon that contract that we have with them or agreement that we have with them until we can be staffed enough that we can protect this town.
Well, I do have to tell you that I was
They have the ability to hire.
Yeah, I was involved with that casino whole thing, and we, we, we wanted to do this. The union wanted to get, to get those. But they have always said if we weren't able to, that they would get their own private.
Believe me, the last thing I want to do is take money out of these guys' pockets.
Well, I know, but
That's, I know, I get it. But, you know, we, we also, you know, I will say between the chief, the deputy and myself, we are extremely appreciative of those who have been working very, very hard. And it's, and it's, this is not at all about the work performance of the members at all. They are, they are extremely well capable, well qualified. They do an excellent job. We are, we just don't have enough bodies. And we're, we're trying to, you can't vote as fast as rules.
So
Just a
I do want to say something. Mike Marcello is here on Zoom, just so everybody knows. He is present. If you're wondering what I'm doing here. Go ahead.
A comment was made about the fire marshal working on the trucks last night. And the, the town council created the fire marshal position pursuant to the charter. I think it was done six or seven years ago. Before that, it was done on an overtime basis. But the town council does have the authority to change indoor bars that position even on a temporary basis if, 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 if we have to go with that direction. So I know the deputy has to order, not because the fire marshal didn't want to work, but the deputy ordered it just so that we were on solid ground, I believe.
So we will also have conversations with the state fire marshal's office to let them be well aware of what's going on, so that they're not blindsided by, you know, some of the issues that are going to happen here in town.
All right. Now, if we only run on two fire stations open, the town is still safe. Am I correct? I mean, it's, it's not the way we would want it to be, but I don't want people to be worried that they're not safe sitting in their home.
There could be delays in response times.
There could be delays.
There could be delays in response times. There could be limited apparatus.
But we're working on mutual aid.
Just the point he made earlier about like multiple calls at the same time, when you're starting with less, it's going to be, it could be a delay.
We're going to make every effort to keep three stations open.
Yes.
We will, to the best that we can. But we can't promise that based on staffing ability that we may not be able to, and that we may be confronted with this again.
Closing Station One means dropping to one rescue.
Right. I understand.
I know you understand. I'm making sure.
Yeah, but could you put the ambulance on Crandall Road?
So then the option would be made if you did that, and
Would be what?
Here's the option. If you were to say you wanted to keep both ambulances in service, there's going to be a high likelihood you'll have no fire coverage at all in the town of Tiverton. Because if you only have the guys working out of those two stations, and both ambulances go out on a call, there's no fire coverage.
Okay.
And I don't know the exact numbers, but I am willing to guesstimate on this. I can get you exact numbers eventually. We get a call, and seventy-five percent of the time, we have a second call. And probably twenty-five percent of that time, we have a third call, all within a ten to fifteen minute span. I mean, it's, it's crazy on how often there is simultaneous calls of Rescue Two goes out, Rescue One goes out within ten minutes.
No.
It's very high.
My understanding is the engine on Crandall Road will respond to an emergency in that area, and then the ambulance meets them there.
It's a licensed ALS engine.
Right.
So it carries all
So it has everything there.
Equipment. It can do everything an ambulance can except for transport it to the hospital.
That's it.
Their E M Ts, their paramedics, their
Well, still, I want to let the community know that. That fire truck is, our paramedics are also firemen, and they do both. So if there's a, like in my area on Stafford Road, the engine shows up first, always. So I just want everyone to know that.
But there are, you, you asked the question of
Yeah.
What, what the repercussions would be. And there could be
A delay.
delayed response because of waiting for mutual aid to come, you know, even Rescue Two. If Rescue Two stays open and it's at the hospital, and it clears the hospital, it could be coming from Charlton in the northern of Fall River instead of, you know, from its station. So it could be a delay. But again, you would have the engine, and there is mutual aid. And I mean, it's not ideal. It's not ideal, for sure. So ideal is to have all three stations open and all trucks in service.
So we have twenty-one right now?
Twenty-one right now. We did graduate two from the fire academy yesterday. However, it's going to be a couple of weeks before they'll count the staffing. They need to be onboarded into the Tiverton Fire Department, but
Now, it's twenty-one, but that's what the leaves are. This
With the family medical, the two that are, there's nine vacancies, two on family medical leave.
So there's nine vacancies.
Nine vacancies.
So there's nineteen available with those family medical leaves?
No. Twenty-one.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
It's time for thirty-two.
Okay.
Thirty-two.
Four platoons of it.
So we're basically down a platoon, plus a guy?
More than a platoon.
So do we have any potential for the nine vacancies?
We do. We have four spots in the org. And so the next fire academy that the state runs is in August. We've secured four spots in that. So we're going through the hiring process right now. We have some candidates that we're moving through. The hope is that they'll continue and want to work in Tiverton and not go elsewhere. That's the problem that we seem to be up against. Is that is, right now, it's hiring season. So we're graduating about ten firefighters yesterday. They already have the ad out to do another class because they don't want to pay overtime.
So I did authorize the chief to advertise the position at fifty-two thousand. By the time we get them into the academy, it'll be well after, that we would hopefully, you know, and we'll talk about negotiating with the union on Tuesday. But it was, the intent was in steps to try to, we could, we could put an ad out, record at thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand. We're going to wind up getting one or two candidates. So it was, the intent was to try to get a pool candidate.
Right. So what Chris is saying, that in order to get people to apply, we had to increase that rate immediately. The union has asked to open the contract, and we agreed, and we've met with them twice.
I don't want to talk about that.
No, I don't. But I just want everyone to know that there, that there is, there is an offer that we are about ready to, to give to them. Because we realize bringing up that the newer hires to fifty-two, we have to compensate the people that have been here longer. And, no, and that's all I'm going to say. But I don't want anybody to think that we're just concentrating on that.
Steps that we have been taking to try to, you know, get retention to pick people on the door.
Mike?
Chief, if enough municipalities had people they needed trained, would the academy ever consider a special class?
So the problem right now is they typically, they, they shut down, after the June class graduates, they shut down from June to August. That's when their, because it's hot weather, it's tough to train in that. That's when they take their vacation time, and then they reopen in August. So we're just up against, this is their time when they shut down, and they also do preventative maintenance on their burn building, their facilities.
Okay.
This is a problem throughout the state, though. I mean, it's not, we, we probably have a worse problem than most, but a lot of the other, the cities can offer so much more money. And a lot of our men are going to those places because that's where the money is. John?
So I have a question as it relates to the academy. I'm assuming that, like, we're required to do a Rhode Island-based academy. We can't cross state lines because Fall River's got the whole training facility and everything right there. So could we?
We have in the past.
Okay.
Sent our guys there in the past. I don't know when the next Florida academy starts. I think they finished one academy just recently. So that would be something that we'd have to contact the Florida Fire Chief for. And I know we have in the past.
Yeah.
There's probably three or four firefighters that have come and gone that I can think of that went to the Florida Fire Academy.
And, and the follow-on question to that is, as we look at the per diems, I understand that, you know, Little Compton, their union, for whatever reason, didn't want to partake. But, you know, can we cross state lines? Can we, you know, can we put this out there and ask Fall River, ask Westport? You know?
Yes and no.
Okay.
So yes, you can, but no, because
We don't have an M O U.
A lot of Massachusetts guys are not Massachusetts, Rhode Island E M Ts. And a lot of Massachusetts E M Ts and paramedics are not nationally registered. So without having the national registry, it's a very long process for them to get their Rhode Island. If they have their national registry, then they can just get their Rhode Island medic, and they can come work here. The other problem that we face is the pay. It's, I don't want to get into that, but it's the pay. If you're trying to compare Massachusetts and those jobs to what we're paying, it's, it's not going to happen.
No, it's not attractive for them to do it.
Exactly. Exactly. And that's
That we can discuss.
Within the, just, just to follow on to that question for Solicitor Cavazza, in the contract, is, does that set the rate for per diem? Or do we have, like, the unilateral ability to just crank that rate up in order to make it attractive?
You have the ability unilaterally to set the rate, the contractual requirement is that they be qualified. So what Deputy Ferrer was saying is
As lo, as long as they're qualified, if we find the, you know, the nine guys in Westport that have, you know, national registry, it could work here. We could, in theory, close the gap by upping the per diem pay in order to make that attractive enough to have staff.
Yes. Having the, there's a compact that you're in agreement that you will need with the community as well for injury.
Of course.
Those types of issues. That was the M O A that was referred to earlier. But those issues can be, can be worked out.
Okay.
But again, that's a temporary problem.
I understand.
Well, what I was just going to say, this is just temporary until we get what we need. How about lateral transfers? They don't have to go to the academy, correct?
A lateral transfer would be somebody that has already completed the fire academy, has their E M T cardiac or paramedic, and are fully qualified. We just bring them in, we train them for three, four weeks or whatever, until they're up to speed, and then we put them on the truck. So we, we have had a few of those.
Yeah.
Hopefully, maybe with the increased pay, which is for new hires, that there's the potential that we might get some. But it's, it's a very, it's, right now, it's a shrinking pool of firefighter candidates, and everybody's competing for that shrinking pool. And I was actually, I was at the graduation yesterday, and that was part of the keynote speaker's speech was, you're part of a shrinking breed in a pool of candidates that are available. It's supply and demand. So the supply is shrinking, and we have a big demand right now.
And President, if I
Sure, go ahead.
Chief, if I may, the we is broader. The we isn't just Tiverton. The we is, there's, there's a demand, a high, high demand across the state.
Right.
And there's a very low supply or a shrinking supply, and that supply is being hold on by all the major cities and the cities in town. So the towns have been really bearing the brunt of the
So, so again, that's, that's yes and no, in my opinion. And that's based on, Portsmouth recently has been hiring lateral transfers. They have had two positions. They had forty applicants for two positions. And you ask why they pay? Look what they pay compared to what we pay. And that's why they're able to get them. And I, and I'm not trying to
That's, that's, I don't want to
I'm not going any farther than that. I just want to
But it's still a factor of the map.
It is.
Obviously, we can't go into the negotiation aspect.
But we are dealing with that in another, another meeting. We are dealing with all of that.
Can we volunteer Dave to, like, ride on the truck? You're still
You seen my back the past week? I have a couple of questions, chief. You, you had mentioned that two graduated yesterday, and then you have an onboarding process here. What does that entail versus them counting slash not counting as manpower, throwing them on?
So the problem with having them count instantly is they're only familiar with the equipment that they use at the Rhode Island Fire Academy. So to really to set them up to success, they need, so right now, what we normally do is a couple, two weeks of Monday through Friday, where they work with all the different shifts, and they go out. And then on the third week, we move them to a shift that they're going to be assigned, and they, they work the twenty-four hours. But prior to this, they weren't counting as manpower. They were riding as an extra person. And then after three weeks, we make a determination based on the shift commander's recommendations. In some instances, we've given people another week because they weren't quite ready. It depends on, you know, where they're at, you know, especially when we get people that come from other departments. We're in a situation now where we probably have to move them sooner rather than later.
And to, to piggyback just one thing on that, for example, the academy does not have a ladder truck, correct?
Oh, no, it does. It has a brand-new ladder truck.
Oh, they do, okay. So even though they do learn ladder operations, that truck could be different from ours.
So ours is a Rosenbauer, theirs is a Pierce.
Yeah.
And it's different, you know, systems on it to operate. And so same, same with our engines. And so they're just familiar with the apparatus that they use down at the Rhode Island Fire Academy.
The academy, obviously laterals were mentioned. So a lateral comes in, they're a hundred percent fire one, fire two. They graduate from the academy, they're ready to go. Say, for example, we have an applicant that is firefighter one, firefighter two, has their basic or even cardiac from, say, Bristol. Is that person able to be hired and put through training and on shift, and then when the academy opens up, they go to the academy?
They don't have to go.
Well, I'm saying volunteer versus lateral paid. So is that something that
So it would just depend on whether they have their firefighter one and firefighter two. If, I mean, most of them, to be a volunteer, probably have that, unless, you know, they would have some level of training. But yes, well, we wouldn't put them actually on shift until they have their fire one and fire two.
But I'm saying, if, if, for example, you get applicants that are fire one and two, they're a cardiac, but they come from a volunteer department versus
Oh, no, we, we would hire them, and they
They'd be considered a lateral?
Oh, they're considered a qualified hire.
Okay. They, they would start to go through the onboarding process.
There's really no sense, if they already have their fire one and fire two, there's really no sense to send them for twelve weeks to redo it.
That's right.
If they're up to, to speed on it.
In recent years, our laterals that we've received have been laterals from out of state that are looking to move from different states to Rhode Island or to this area. We've had one from South Car, Virginia, Texas. I mean, that's, that's the two right off the top of my head. But that's typically what it's been. It hasn't been like inside Rhode Island, department, department. But that's typically what it's been, it hasn't been like inside Rhode Island, department, department. But the chief's right, if it's Fire One and Two, pro board certified, they do not need to go to the Fire Academy. They would come on, do our two, three-week onboard process, and then they would be, they could count as manpower.
All right, I just wasn't sure, since I've left the service, that i, if there was a requirement that everybody has to go through an academy of some sort. Okay, thanks.
Deb? So if someone were to come from Virginia or wherever they came, how long does that take for them, like, worst-case scenario, to be licensed in Rhode Island?
So with the, with the EMT stuff, so a lot of, a lot of states are doing paramedics, and they don't do anything but paramedics, it's basics and paramedics. So the two that we have received in the, in the past have been paramedics, they are paramedics, and they were nationally registered, so it's a paper trail.
That's fast.
That's all it is, and it's quick.
But what if they're not?
Then they're not gonna be qualified to work, you know what I mean? They'd have to go and get their EMT license, and they'd have to call the state and see if it's just a matter of taking a test, if it's a matter of going through a whole class, so it's, it's...
So it could be different depending on where they're coming from?
Nationally-registered people are the best case scenario for us, 'cause all that is is paper trail.
He's nationally registered, he's a paramedic.
Jay?
So we're at the point now where we can barely staff, and if we have any more callouts, we will not be able to staff. That's our big problem. You know, the big problem is, where would you get anybody? I know we can't talk about pay, but that's what's driving the conversation.
Mike, do you have anything else? Chris? I do wanna say something, and Tim doesn't know I'm gonna say this. I'm speaking for myself and I think the rest of the council. We have confidence in you, Chief Bailey. You have been fighting for the men to get a good negotiation going right now, and you've been our driving force, and I just want everyone to know that. I have confidence in you, I think you've done a great job, I think you're working hard, and this does not reflect on you at all, in my opinion. And I, I hope that the council agrees with me. But, um, we appreciate what you've done, and everyone needs to know you have been one of the biggest forces to try to get us to get a decent proposal on the table.
Just to add, I mean, there've been suggestions that you have not been an advocate for your team, but you have been a strong advocate since you arrived. So I, that may not be seen in public all the time, but you have been, and you've been pushing and pushing and pushing us to move forward on this, so thank you for that.
A lot of this happens in executives, so people don't realize it, but trust me. And also Josh has been in negotiations with us recently, and he's been a very strong advocate to, um, pay the men what, what he thought they deserved. And both of these leaders, uh, we have confidence in. Anyone?
I will echo that exactly with the chief and with the deputy. So appreciate the work you guys are doing and hoping to keep this thing afloat.
So this weekend, are we keeping all three open?
Right now, staffing today is at six. We have six men, but that's two at each station, so all three stations are open. Tomorrow, I believe there's no one at the casino today. Because of that, we had to move someone from the casino. Tomorrow, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that we will not have a casino detail, but we will have all six, we'll have all three stations open and running. And that's, I, I believe, the captain that's working today texted me today, give me a report of what was going on, he told me that he has everything open right now, everything filled now up until Thursday. So we might have a little hiccup on Thursday, but again, we have options, I mean, there's...
I purposely did this so the community knows we are paying attention. We know there's a plan in place, um, and we have confidence in the three of you to make this work as best as you can, but we also realize we need the men to make this work, so...
So, at, at the moment, you're not aware of anybody that's gonna be going on vacation or any planned medical leave in the next, in the near future?
So in terms of...
Some is coming.
Vacation, it's contractually obligated, and the problem we're up against is to use it or lose it, uh, by now to June thirtieth, so there is vacation that's gonna be taken by, by the members. As far as medical issues, I can't predict. And also, there's rumors that there are members that have...
Planned medical.
Planned medical.
Let that go there.
That's more of a Tuesday, kind of...
Um, we are, I did add this to the executive session on Tuesday, where we'll have Tim present, and, um, we'll be talking more in detail of everything that's going on. Did we put an ad in the newspaper for the increased pay yet?
It's on, it's on the app.
It's on the app, okay. So that's one step forward, hopefully.
Is Tuesday here?
Tuesday is here.
We're at Middle School.
Oh, no. Tuesday's at the Middle School, I'm really sorry. The way, the way that we do it in...
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. If we have to, we'll come back here. So, anybody wanna add anything?